Good evening, everyone, and welcome to the Butte Silver Bow Council of Commissioners Committee, the whole meeting, March 9th, 2016. Could I have roll call, please?
I have 11 present, one providing, and zero app.
Thank you, Colleen. Would you join us with Commissioner Henderson for the prayer and the pledge?
Almighty God, we implore you, look upon us and guide us this night as we make decisions which will greatly affect our community of Butte Silver Bow. Direct our thoughts, words, and deeds so that we please you and best serve our fellow citizens. Amen.
Amen.
Amen. I pledge allegiance to the Lord, the United States of America, and to the republic of which we stand, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Yes? For the chair, just one item I just wanted to publicly on the record note is that Commissioner Palmer has graciously agreed to be added to the Butte management team with the consent decree negotiations table. And I think he starts next week, get him up to snuff and bring him up to date on things, and I think he'll be a great asset to that group. And thank you Dave for coining up for that one. So, we'll just move right into section one. This is our presentation, Communication 16-91. Northee Tretheway, Restore Our Creek Coalition, ROCC, requesting Council of Commissioners authorize a presentation on March 9th, 2016 from ROCC regarding the Upper Silver Bow Creek and the Coalition. Northee?
Thank you.
The floor is yours.
Sometimes, oh geez, I didn't see the microphone here, so it might sound a little louder than I normally do. Uh, thank you, all of you, for allowing the Restore Our Creek Coalition to come and speak to you tonight. My name is Northee Tretheway. I'm here with Joe Griffin, and Phil McGregor was going to provide a video tonight, but evidently the PC wouldn't allow his video to show, but it's a video everyone should be able to see at some point, so we'll do something. We'll come back and make sure that that happens. Restore Our Creek, our vision statement, I just want to kind of give you a little bit of a brief background about Restore Our Creek Coalition, then allow Joe to do his PowerPoint slide, which is an incisive look at Silver Bow Creek, and has some very compelling information in there that I think you'll be interested in. Our vision statement is clean. The Silver Bow Creek Corridor to restore Silver Bow Creek and create a greenway for public enjoyment. This requires the removal of mining waste at the Parrot Talings, Northside Talings, and Diggings East. Removing the tailings and restoring the creek will safeguard protection of superfund cleanup actions downstream to Missoula and the Columbia River Basin. Well, who is Restore Our Creek? It's a coalition of more than 15 groups that came together just for that purpose, to restore our creek. The Coalition this year was named as the Volunteer Group of the Year by the Butte Local Development Corporation. recognition of what we've done in mobilizing youth populations to...
...important cause.
The Coalition is concerned about waste in place, and we're concerned that new groundwater data shows that there is a larger plume along Silver Bow Creek than what EPA says there is. We're also concerned that waste in place at the creek violates normal practices in remediation. We're concerned that long-term threats remain downstream to people and the environment, and we're concerned that incomplete remediation prevents effective restoration. Our goal is captured in our name, and we want to convince the responsible agencies to restore our creek. To achieve our goal, what we think we need to do is engage with decision-makers about remedies for stormwater runoff concerns. We want to ensure that Restore Our Creek Corridor replaces lost recreation resources by incorporating the Greenway Trail along the corridor. And we want to engage residents envisioning the restored area to optimize future development opportunities for Butte's use and the commercial economic development. What we're doing to achieve our goal, we are hosting public events to gather feedback from the Butte and asking them to imagine what the restored Silver Bow Creek Corridor would look like. We were asking, we spoke to Chief Executive Matt Vincent, Butte Silver Bow Executive and the council, to be sure that the community is heard before moving further with design and before moving on the consent decree. We have, on March 21st, a visioning workshop that we're going to have at the Mining City Center at 400 West Park, same place where we had the public forum earlier. At that visioning workshop, we plan to gather the community to imagine and bring forth ideas for restoration for the Silver Bow Creek Corridor. We've also been enhancing our communications with EPA, State of Montana, Butte Silver Bow VP on cleanup and restoration of Silver Bow Creek to ensure that decision-makers are aware of community concerns and desires, and that they are being heeded by the decision-makers. And it's important to realize that there's tremendous talent in Butte, I think, in terms of technical capability, historical knowledge, and social aspects that regard Silver Bow Creek. And it's important to make sure that knowledge, that technical acumen is brought into this process. And before turning this over to Joe, I just want to say thank you to Chief Executive Matt Vincent and to the council members for helping support this process, because in the long run, this is one of the most important things this community will see for its future by making sure Butte is, remains the best place on the planet, and what we do here is going to bode well for future generations. So, thank you.
Northee, any questions for Northee before he steps away from the microphone? Commissioner Walker?
Northee, thanks for your presentation. Could you email a copy of that video to all of us and we can...
We can, it's a little big, but I'll tell you what we'll do. Somehow or another, we'll get it to each one of you. That's why we couldn't get it up there soon, because it is a little large. It's got both video and audio combined with it, but it's only about two minutes. We'll make sure you get that.
That'd be great, thank you.
Great, thanks. Any further questions for Northee? Shall we proceed then with...
Thank you.
Joe? Joe Griffin?
So, and, uh, Madam Chairman and members of the council and Chief Executive Matt Vincent, I'd like to introduce myself and give you a little background on who I am and why I'm giving you this presentation. I came to Butte in 1990 to work on both Butte and Anaconda superfund sites. Was originally a contractor for Atlantic Richfield. In 2004, I became the state's project manager for Butte Priority Soils, and since the Coalition started, I guess I would say I'm now a card-carrying member of the Restore Our Creek Coalition. So, let me jump right in, and I'm gonna... Can you guys hear me all right if I step away from the mic? Because I kinda gotta do this myself.
Sounds good.
Okay. Oh, okay, that's fine. So, just to start with, I have worked on consent decree both here and in Anaconda. I've been involved in both of them. I understand consent decree pretty well, and I understand the technical aspects really well, too. But this is, of course, the bigger view of Silver Bow Creek. Of course, this portion down here is the Black Tail Creek. Silver Bow Creek starts right there, flows all the way to the Warm Springs Pond. All of these extra blue lines, many of those are ephemeral streams. But within that, we can see the outline of Butte Priority Soils, the heavy red line there. That outline actually has a pretty severe effect on Silver Bow Creek's water quality. So, I want to go through what will consent decree provide? These are a couple of questions. First of all, it's too bad this goes off, but anyways, will it provide, this is a question, so the question marks cut off, will it provide long-term protection for Silver Bow Creek? One that's maybe more pertinent to you guys is will it provide long-term liability protection for the city? In other words, are there parts of it that if it's not taking care of other superfund, will the citizens in this town pay for it? And the last one is, is there a sound scientific basis for the consent decree? There's no way we're just at it, there's... I don't know, you might feel a turn where the, where the thing's being projected from, you might... There it is. It's all the way out. Okay. Hello, we'll, we'll carry on. So, anyways, I've often thought that working in the Butte Priority Soils operable unit was a little bit like falling down a ladder. And honestly, the earlier I go, the higher I get is, I've heard it too much, and it was scheduled driving process rather than the science driving the process. So, I would say, you know, in Butte, what EPA's heard, because sound science really does take time, and beating haste is going to risk power depletion. I'd also like to point out and make it very clear that once the consent decree is signed, there's really no going back. I think that the only time you would see, well, first of all, to make a change to the consent decree, you have to get all the signatories to re-sign it. The only way I can really see any kind of change to the consent decree, either mine flooding or this one, is say pit box or suddenly start to kill the people in the Greeley Eagle River. I don't know. It's going to be that big of a deal. Here's the overriding problems. First of all, they are consent decree negotiations that are secret, so we won't really understand what's going on until it's handed to us and it's pretty much a done deal. Like I already said, there are no changes to it, and Butte will live with these decisions forever. I mean, that's it. So, I think, especially for you guys, I mean, I guess you guys are a good group to talk to, because you are the ones making a lot of decisions for this county. I remember talking to the council in the past when we were building up to the Record of Decision. We gave a lot of presentations back there. This is way more serious, but, um, I would like to see the consent decree delayed, really. And I honestly believe that if we could get EPA to be a reasonable participant in this process, which they haven't been, I think it would take two or three years to come to a consent decree. So, I'm not saying put it away for decades. I'm saying we can get it done, I just think it's premature. I think it needs a thorough technical review of the remedy, and I think really that should come from Region A. I think I have CTEC participation in technical discussions. I believe that technical people from this community could participate in other discussions. CTEC gets money from EPA to hire technical people, and their technical assistance person has actually been in technical discussions in the past. The other thing, is not a small thing, is that Record of Decision amendments, they can be amended, and if it is amended, that has to go through a public process. So, they can develop the whole remedy as they see fit. That has to be put into a proposed plan, the proposed plan goes to the public, the public can comment on it, and then EPA will have to respond to all those comments. The other way that they can do this, if they're chang, they will be making changes to the Record of Decision. The other way to do it is call an explanation of significant differences, and that, they don't have to involve the public at all. This is what I really think it would take, is revising the EPA project administration, and I think that there is technical and administrative people at Region A in Denver that are very capable of looking into this and saying, yes, this was already done in the past, let's take care of it. And that down there says EPA in Helena has been an ongoing problem, and I don't see them changing their mind on some very serious matters. I'd also like to say, and I would caveat my last statement about Helena EPA is, is that their current project manager, Mattia Green, I think would be perfectly capable carrying on if he was directed directly from Denver instead of help. I think he's on a very short leash right now. So, let's talk about, this is, here's the Civic Center right here, here's the Upper Silver Bow Creek Channel, it's called MSD, and this is the contaminated, zone of contaminated groundwater that is now written off. They'll never have to meet standards in that zone. But what was said in the rod is that groundwater from that zone can never affect, at first they affect Silver Bow Creek. So, we have two groundwater capture systems. There's a sub stream, and there's one down here that's what we call the older area, one down there where the Colorado Galing was. But if you notice, the gap in the middle. And so, coming in that area between the good capture zones, it could be the parrot plume surfacing. There is additional metal sediment in the creek through that area. It could be the parrot plume surfacing. It could be ground, local groundwater contamination, in other words, other sources that are right in that area that are causing groundwater contamination, and it could be the slag wall canyon sediments. I would say, and I have those three questions, my answer would be, they're all fairly alike as contributing to the increases. I would also say, and I personally believe this, my background is hydrogeology, I've studied groundwater for 30 years now, the science is really incomplete right now. But really, you know, that had to do with the parrot plume and, you know, stuff that had no variety, something that isn't, maybe is on people's minds, it should be, because this is the number one problem we have right now, is stormwater. We still have huge exceedances of the water quality standards in the stream. They are looking at waiving the state standard right now. There's an evaluation to look at. If they waive it, it'll go from state standard to the federal standard. And I can tell you, even if you look at that lesser standard, the federal standard, we're still exceeding the acute water quality standard in the stream by up to five times. That has to be devastating trial observation periodically. The one thing we have found in Butte that truly works is retention ponds, and I add on wetlands there, retention ponds built with wetlands would be a really great reference. They've tried a lot of different things, but this is really the one that we see 95% removal of copper in the Zulagoditch using retention basins. I, you know, I hope you guys maybe recognize this picture, the Chamber of Commerce is right out of the picture. This is the walkway along Black Tail Creek. This is actually Black Tail Creek. But I firmly believe we could build a retention pond system and wetland system that would look just like this, with trails and amenities along. As a matter of fact, in 2008, the EPA issued a report, and they said retention basins need to be installed along MSD as soon as possible. They haven't happened. That was in 2008. Another sort of part of the stormwater story is, actually has to do with our sewage treatment plant. And I'll tell the story, and then I'll let you know why I think this is a very important issue that has to be taken care of, or else we will be paying for it. We will be paying for mine waste pollution in the stream. So, cage fish study, it's pretty simple. You put fish in little cages, they're little chamber links, and they had one cage downstream of the sewage treatment plant, how falls in the creek, one cage upstream. So, let me, we can't quite see it, but actually these tick marks along here are every two days. In addition to having the fish in cages, they were sampling copper, both upstream and downstream. So, this blue line above, well, I mean, this is copper along the left axis, so time along the bottom, copper level along the left, and the copper is in terms of meeting standards or not. So, if it's at one, it's right at the standard. If it's at two, that means it's two times the usual standard. So, the blue line is the upstream copper level. The orange and yellow line is the downstream copper levels, in other words, downstream of the sewage treatment plant. Right here, we had a couple of days of small rain events, and you have to understand that our sewage treatment plant does get surges of stormwater. It's not intended to be that way, but most sanitary sewer systems leak. It's called inflow and infiltration. It's a common thing, it just happens. So, we had the rain events, and you notice we have this big spike in copper, went up to two and a half times the acute standard. Well, surely enough, downstream, we had every fish in the cage die, and upstream, they all live. This isn't just a stormwater issue, but this is the most severe part of the, I mean, this isn't the only issue in the sewage treatment plant, but this is by far the most severe one. EPA doesn't even recognize this problem, but EPA also wants to disregard the fact that on a daily basis, we're putting higher levels of copper into the stream than any other source, any other point source Silver Bow Creek. And although EPA recognized that as a problem, and they said it should be investigated under superfund, it hasn't. And I think right now, EPA is intending to ignore that, leave it out of the consent decree, so again, all on Butte Silver Bow, I think, the taxpayers and taxpayers in this county that they work with. Stormwater remedy, actually, the biggest thing that affected stormwater was, we all remember the days when the hill looked a lot like that. And this is the diamond, so you go in and you cap this stuff, and it certainly prevents stormwater runoff like that from reaching the bridge. It stops stormwater from picking up all of the metals off of these dumps. But part of the program then is to, is to cap all of the waste in town. This is, actually, this is called the Anderson Shaft Site. This is a name reclaimed site. Do you guys see the regulation? As a matter of fact, this down here is a little blow-up of some of the sediments. The blue color there is from copper salts on the surface. This lies right above a couple of stormwater inlets that go directly to the MSD. So, EPA sensed the Record of Decision, EPA has considered this acceptable reclamation, and they said, you know what, it just needs maintenance. And who's responsible for the maintenance? Well, it's Butte Silver Bow. And when I tried to bring this up with EPA in the, quite a while ago, that's what they told me. They said, you know what, Butte Silver Bow has needs to do its job. But let me tell you how it works in Anaconda. Over here, they have a program, it's called the Butte Reclamation Evaluation System. And it's not a program, but EPA keeps treating it like it's a program. There's no program there, it says that you go out and you look, and does it have dense enough vegetation? Are there gutted erosion always forming, and on and on? But it doesn't say what you're really supposed to do when there's trouble, there's really no program. In Anaconda, they have the same thing, it's called the Land Reclamation Evaluation System, and they have to earn, ARCO has to earn a score of 115. And once they do that, it's passed on to operations and maintenance. And I've seen ARCO have to redo sites two or three times to get it right in the first place. We were missing that step here. It's called making sure it's operational and functional before it goes on to O and M. And remember, we will be doing the O and M on these sites till the end of time. So, ultimately, success depends on these guys, and, you know, I gotta say, these guys too, because I live with them. And we will live with this remedy forever, so I can't stress how important this consent decree is going to be to all of us. And, you know, we'll be in the past, and what was Silver Bow Creek? Well, the best thing we have actually comes from the Salish tribe, and under the Hellgate Treaty, they were given rights to Silver Bow Creek. And their oral tradition tells us that they called it Sintotke. Matt knows this story really well. And it's a Totsinotke, that's the place where you could shoot them in the head. And it's what that, I didn't pronounce the right name, right? But it's what it really meant was, you had a small creek, relatively small creek, with relatively large bull trout and cutthroat trout in it, it was pretty easy to harvest them with an arrow. These kids here, and this thing, this is part of Indian education for all of these are a couple of U High students. I got to thank them, that's where I learned the story about Sintotke and oral tradition of the Salish Indians. But, you know, for all of us, and I always end with this, I still want to tie with these folks, it's the Clark Forked Water City Education Program, and it is, how the tech may try to teach kids what's happened on the whole Clark Fork system, it worked from Butte to Zulagoditch, and it taught all the schools lessons that are too important, but I think one of the main things we want to do is build the stewards of tomorrow. We want our young people to understand how important this is. And that's, that's all I have.
Thank you, Joe.
This is really good. I gotta tell you, this presentation started out probably only two hours, and...
Good job, Joe. I saw the last one.
I don't know how long that went.
The last one was 45 minutes, but it was excellent, and, you know, I appreciate your convincing it, and there was a lot, a lot of material. Questions for Joe, Commissioner Henderson?
Madam Chair, Joe, I'm a little confused in this. Why with so many health problems, Butte and Anaconda, and all the problems we have with this waste, why is the consent decree so confidential? Why does it have to be that confidential, that we can't have so much public input, or people that know what they're talking about, or to weigh in? I mean, why is it so, it seems like it's just a little, just a few people, and it's, and they're making a decision which will greatly affect this community?
Joe?
I kind of split it apart, honestly, because there's the technical aspect, and then there's the true negotiation. And in my mind, I finally realized where I get to split it, because I went through a lot of whole kind of meetings. And the one thing, the technical meeting, there were no lawyers. And I really think that the technical side of it should be a lot more important. I don't think it will ever not be negotiations in secret. I think that's just kind of the nature of negotiations. But it has to be upfront, that we understand what we're getting, have the ability to say that, you know? I would say, the best thing that was done here in the recent past was the lead health study, and it was very... And it was very, it, it included people from the community. CTEC has Steve Ackerman with them. He's a PhD in risk assessment, I mean, in risk communication. Um, I watched the whole thing on the all of the meetings. Um, it's actually ARCO consultants that provided the, having listened for it, but it was a long, involved process. And, and what I really found about that, and this is just on the human health side, is that, um, but we tried to find comparisons to view to other communities. And the problem was, there was no other community in the state of Montana that had the level of lead, lead data that we have. I mean, we have immense data set there, and that's what was the basis of it. We had to go to a national, uh, data set to actually have a comparison. Um, but anyways, uh, that, and the reason I'm bringing up the study, I really think that all of the technical meetings should have the ability to see that all. And it's what it is, it's by people from the community into that. So this is why anybody can go, who wants to go. And some, you know, they like physicians from the town, nurses and statisticians. So, I think that, that will be workable process.
Thanks, Joe.
Any other questions? Commissioner Henderson?
Thank you very much, uh, Chuck. Uh, thank you very much, first off, for the, your presentation and everything. Thank you even more for condensing it down from the two hour version.
And you know what I'm gonna fly, Joe?
I, I, I figure we're all happy about that. I, I wouldn't mind having a lot more information on it, though, honestly. I, I did have one question. It, it seems like with the Record of Decision, the RLD that was passed in '06, that there was an opportunity for that to be reopened every five years, if I'm correct?
No, that isn't reopens the Record of Decision. When there is waste left in place, which there is in, um, all of these sites up and down the Clark Fork, you have to review the remedy every time.
Review the remedy, okay, so...
And, and, you know, my picture of the Anderson Shaft Site.
Mm-hmm.
That, that, if you go back and look at the Record of Decision the last time, um, they said, you know, everything's fine with the capping in this Thomas Hill. The only thing is, Butte Silver Bow just needs to start getting jobs.
Follow-up, Commissioner Henderson?
Well, see, that's one of my main concerns about it, is that, uh, there seems to be this idea that it's fine the way it is. And when I look at your fishers, when I talk to other people in the communities, when I go on some of these field trips, and we're looking at the groundwater, and we see the immense amount of minerals in the water, you're throwing shovels, and then they're copper plated after a couple hours, and, you know, and nails after a few minutes, you know? That concerns me. When I look at the concentration of the copper killing the fish, every, it, it looks like every, it's like fish are fine, fish are dead, fish are fine, fish are dead. It, that's basically what that looked like every couple days. And, and so that, that's really concerning, when you're having that much water going through here and causing that problem downstream, whereas upstream, they're relatively fine. Why does EPA, this, when they have all of this data, when they can see the Anderson Site, when they can see the wastewater site, when they hear the community as a whole, when they're getting citizen groups suing constantly over these issues, why don't they re-look at this? The science is constantly changing. Science and water, when I first studied at tech, is a hell of a lot different from twenty years ago when I started, from now, actually, twenty-five years. So, there's a lot more science and data always coming forward. And it seems like the EPA and some others just have blinders, that they don't want to look or take into this into account. And the thing that concerns me most about it is we spend hundreds, well, tens of millions of dollars fixing everything from Milltown down, further, further, and further, and further, and further. And then we get to the source, and then all of a sudden, they're just like, oh, it's good, it's fine. But if you don't treat the source, everything that we did downstream is going to be completely forgotten. And that's my biggest concern about this. My biggest concern is we have another one of these ten-year, hundred-year storms, by sending all that pollution down to Milltown anyway. We're gonna be doing the same thing. And the only difference is, we're gonna have all of this settled and everything else. And like you said, we're not gonna be able to reopen that consent decree once it's signed. It, it's not gonna happen. There's no way it's gonna happen. Because if it's reopened, there's gonna be a lot more money coming, and nobody wants this. We might want to see it, but the other side is gonna want to see that.
Joe, would you want to come in?
Yeah. My impression, having worked with EPA, is the problem has been, um, two-fold. One, one is, you know, the parrot, where you talked about seeing blue water, we didn't participate, how about? That's the parrot around water.
Mm-hmm.
And, you, you know, they made a decision back in the Record of Decision, to leave those wastes in place. And it was based on faulty information. And, and actually, the state knew it was faulty at the time. Montana Bureau of Geology was faulty at the time. We just put in some additional wells, and we understood that they had mischaracterized the aquifer. And, um, they made that decision, and they seem absolutely unwilling to reconsider it. But I would say on the other hand, and the state was very clear that they disagreed with the decision. There's a letter that is attached to the Record of Decision from Richard Oxford, our director at the time, that said, "We disagree with your decision. We, we like the other option where you remove the parrot to dig in the eastern north side of the panes. That's the one we prefer. We think that this will present a long-term threat to the health of Silver Bow Creek." And that's where the state's at. The EPA had just said, "No, we made this decision. We're now capturing all of the groundwater in our, in our subgrain, and the flume is not expanding, so it won't be a problem." You know, it's a very arguable question. Um, it, it, the problem is, there's a lot of uncertainty around, is the flume moving? Is the flume being with the capping? Um, but another piece of it is, um, at the time of the Record of Decision, the stormwater program looked like a very good program. The problem has been, that was 2006, we're not 2016. EPA hasn't followed through on what they said they needed to do, which was annual monitoring, annual evaluation, and then annual implementation of additional measures based on the analysis. They have only done one analysis so far, they're scrambling to complete a second one. And the last time I saw it, the one they're doing now, it was pretty pathetic. It was nowhere near as good as the first one. So, I, I would say, you know, there are two parts to this. One is, I think, EPA is unwilling to relook at decisions they made. But the other part is, I don't think they've managed to decipher.
Follow-up, Commissioner Henderson?
Uh, thank you. I, I would have to share your opinion with that a hundred percent. My biggest concern is, it seems almost as if our hands are tied. Because there's, you know, the state's complaining about it, but we're complaining about it. You can definitely see the science has changed. And you can definitely see the, the remedy was to leave it in place, and now we're scrambling to be able to remove it as quick as possible. Some people I've talked to, Chris Daley and a few others, mentioned to me that the water was supposed to be fine and not reach aquifer for about a hundred years or so. And now they're talking, and this was ten years ago, now they're talking about four years, or five years it could be in the aquifer. And so that tells me it's moving about a five, or about a twenty to one span in time. Why is the EPA so, I, I, I know you can't speak for them, but if they're so dead set, if, if they're so dead set with these blinders on, with any, with just blatant refusal, it looks to me, to look at the facts, staring them in the face. You know, they're supposed to advocate protection of the environment, from what I understood. They're the agency that advocates for the protection of the environment, and making sure it's cleaned up properly, and they're doing their jobs properly. But they're just willfully ignoring the biggest part of this problem. And there seems to be nothing that we can really do about it.
First of all, I'd say stormwater is a far bigger problem. It's made huge improvements by putting in that subgrain. But, um, it, it really comes down to, there may be environments that they're capturing it all, and the flume's not moving. Um, and it, it quickly evolves into a very technical discussion, really quickly. And like now, um, EPA has a lot of ARCO to sort of write the book on that. And the book is probably, you know, about this much documentation.
Okay.
Um, it, it has been hard for everybody, including ARCO contractors, to actually keep up with the, on the discussion. Um, but I, I can guarantee you that they cannot say that to any level of certainty, that they're capturing it all and the flume's not moving. Um, there's good reasons to believe on the other side, the flume is moving, and that they're not capturing it all. Um, you know, the Bureau of Montana Bureau of Mines and Geology will give you a very different story than what ARCO's giving you. But nobody's had the opportunity to actually keep up with ARCO. You know, ARCO has a small army of consultants that put these things together. Um, and, and the state is way outmatched.
Commissioner Henderson, and then Commissioner Perdido.
Madam Chair, I, I think Joe kind of answered that. I, I was kind of wondering about, um, that French drain system down on Texas Avenue, if that, if, if you agreed that that was the answer for that runoff, for that...
No, that's, it's a separate issue, that it only captures groundwater, it's actually separated from stormwater. At that point, it, it, so the channel itself is lined with a, uh, impermeable liner. And then below that, it's a horizontal well, so it's just, it's sea pipe, it's engine diameter, and that's what, it's like a normal vertical well, this is just a horizontal. And it, 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 it functions fairly well. I don't know if it functions perfectly well. I mean, that's still part of the whole undefining science of this site.
Thank you.
Commissioner Perdido.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Um, thank you, Nordee, and thank you, Joe, for this presentation. Um, I appreciate it, and I appreciate Restore Our Creek. Uh, I want to comment on, follow up to what Commissioner Henderson said about our hands are tied, and they shouldn't be. Uh, this is our community, and we, um, that's what Restore Our Creek's all about. We need to take this back. And when you said, referred to the technical part of it, and all of the technical nature of it, and what happened in Colorado shouldn't happen here in Butte. And the, there are enough questions in the science with the EPA. I think Butte Silver Bow needs to say enough with the rod, and it should reopen the rod. It's 2016, ten years have passed. And we should demand from the EPA to reopen the Record of Decision, and say, we are enough, we are ahead in our science, and we have the technical ability with the people here. And you alluded to the fact that we have some brilliant people here, and the Montana Tech folks. And I would ask you, if we have some of the most brilliant minds here that have been working on the Berkeley pit, and the stormwater drains, and everything here, that they can help solve the problems that we are facing. And shouldn't we demand that we reopen it and solve the problems ourselves, and demand that we can, we can do this, don't you think, Joe?
Joe, would you like to carry, carry a comment?
Um, I, I guess, you know, I, I've considered this a lot. I mean, and actually, you guys are right. I mean, so what, so what can we do about it? And, and that's, I kind of started with what I think we should be demanding, and, and that is, to put it in the hands of Region Eight, to really look at this. Um, there's a gentleman there, he's, I think, the Deputy, uh, Regional Administrator, his name's Martin Hesmark. He has been the man coming here to go to consent decree meetings. I think he's the guy that we need to say, hey, look, you know, Hellgullen is just tying this down to what they believe, and that they're, they, they are unable to get out of the trap themselves. We, we need a new administrator. My original slideshow actually had, um, it started out with talking about what, what went on in Berkeley pit. And then I moved to what went on at Milltown. And then I asked, what do these two sites have in common? Besides, they both have a technical and practical ability evaluation, so they weigh water quality standards in the stream, for the river. Um, and they both left waste in place. Um, but it was, um, it was the project, uh, it was the project management. Um, and at that time, John Bordell was the head of Hellgullen EPA. And to me, and I kind of knew John, I, I dealt with him because of the deep prior to soil. He was a fox stops here kind of guy. And, and ever since he died, Phil Offenbaum died, that, and I've never heard of him once. But it was unfortunate, because he was, he, he would be here standing in front of you, explaining why EPA was doing what they were doing. And he would think that it was right. But at least now, it, it's kind of vague, who, who, who's desk does the bug stop on? And I think it's Martin Hesmark. There's another gentleman in Region Eight in Denver, um, named Andrew Schmidt. He's a hydrogeologist, and he's got a lot of experience in something called Technical and Practical, Technical and Practicality, which is what's gonna happen here too. There'll be weighing standards in the stream here, they're working on the evaluation. I think he would be a key person to have as technical oversight to review this remedy. Um, that's all I can think of. You know, it's been suggested, maybe we could bring in a, a, a third party altogether, like the USGS. I don't, maybe that could happen, I don't think so. I, I think, I think the structures there within EPA, they get it much better.
Okay, thank, thank you, Joe. Commissioner McDonough, and then Commissioner Sorch.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Um, this is for John Sessow. Um, since he's our negotiator at the table, I'd just like to see if there's a staff report, or maybe just the overview again of the consent decree in the process of negotiation.
John?
Um, Madam Chair, members of the council, John Sessow. The, the staff report is, uh, that Mr. Hesmark is in the room. He's at the table. He is negotiating for EPA out of Region Eight. The staff report would also include that much of what Joe is calling for is on the table and being discussed to address and make part of the final remedy, including the installation of set basins. And then the staff report would also, uh, make it clear that the parrot tailings are gonna be removed. Uh, they're gonna start that project this summer. And then they're gonna move forward with the removal of the east and north diggings and the blacktail verb. All issues that we have been struggling with since 2006, when the rod came out, are under discussion. And Butte Silver Bow does not intend to sign anything unless it's brought before you, and you get to see everything in great detail. And we don't have any intention of bringing a deal in front of you unless Butte Silver Bow's long-term liability is, is, uh, covered, that there are resources made available to take care of this place. It's been Butte Silver Bow's position for the last twenty-five years, that it's our goal as your staff, it's our goal in all these negotiations to insulate our taxpayers from any costs associated with dealing with these wastes. Uh, there's probably been, um, you know, I can't even speculate, but millions and millions of dollars have been made available to Butte Silver Bow to, to actually participate in this process. And, uh, in my view, uh, there has been tremendous progress over the last year. Uh, I do not quarrel with any of the information... I do not quarrel with any of the information that has been presented this evening. I can only report to you that this is well-understood by, and we are reviewing this information every day. And there are more than just a few people involved in these conversations. EPA comes with an army of consultants who are part of the discussion. The state of Montana, both their DEQ and their NRD program brings an army of consultants that are part of the discussions. We have retained consultants to assist us in reviewing the information, so we are not a step behind or a dollar short. And the only real issue that I would quarrel with in terms of Joe's presentation is the timing. You know, we started this process in 1992. We worked, the first Record of Decision was supposed to come out in 1997, it was delayed for nine years while things were being figured out. The Record of Decision came out and now it's been 10 years trying to negotiate a consent decree. I can also report that the set, the issues that are in front of us, that we're really struggling with resolving, are the same issues that were in front of us in 2010, when the consent decree discussions broke down the first time. They were the same issues that were not necessarily figured out in the Record of Decision. And throughout this whole process, this business of how to deal with the stormwater and how the stormwater interacts with the groundwater, when a steep slope like we have on the Butte Hill feeds into a stream that's no wider than, than the table that's in front of you. This is an issue, it's hard stuff, we're getting through it, there's been tremendous progress. And while Joe is entirely correct that we still have challenges associated with meeting all the standards, acute and chronic, which means all the time or just when it's, when it's raining, it's a struggle. It's particularly a struggle when, you know, we have indigenous soils that have many metals that, you know, ultimately are not, we're not going to be able to totally clean up. So we are working on your behalf in these rooms, trying to figure this stuff out. We are also working hard to be, get the approval, I guess, to communicate with you on a regular basis, to keep you up to date on the pinch points that we're addressing and to keep you apprised of the, of the ways in which or the options that are in front of us to try to resolve some of the remaining issues. A lot of work's been done, some work needs to be, get done now. The issues that were brought up associated with the waves that were left behind or the caps that weren't completed as well as they should, believe me, believe me, that is front and center of our input. We are making the case that we are simply not going to be left holding the bag for waste that were not cleaned up properly under this program. And we will not recommend to you, nor will you sign anything until that gets figured out and addressed. And we are getting some momentum to, from all the parties to take care of these remaining problems, make some good final decisions on how we're going to take care of the place, how the place can be made to be taken care of. And I'm, I'm as confident today as I ever have been that the parties are working together, they are listening. I can also report to you that all of the activities in Butte that have been occurring over these last six months have made a difference. People are listening. And, and the public input that has been expressed so well by many is being brought right to the negotiating table and it's being heard loud and clear. And so we are, we are in a process and I, I think that, we hope that we can compel the right decisions and we will not be recommending a final decree to you until we are satisfied that all of Butte Silver Bow's interests are represented and protected.
And I just want to say that this is a presentation by Restore Our Creek, Nordee Trippway and, and Joe's input and we're not here to question a lot of things. I mean, it's more of an information only, just wanted us all to remember that at the table here, so. Thank you very much for coming and Nordee, want to speak again?
If I might, just, just in closing, I think a lot of the questions that were brought up tonight, Cindy and Mr. Anderson and others, you know, when you think about all of the things that are unknown right now, it seems like there's not a lot of answers, is there? It seems like it's a little bit in flux, which should make you feel like it's a little bit scary because things are going on in, in negotiations that are confidential and I can understand, I never question the character or the competence of people in those negotiations. We've got the best people in Butte. We have Matt Vincent, who is as smart a chief executive as we've had for a while, and he, and he's got a lot of, of things that help move things ahead, but still, it's a, it's a secret negotiation. And so once it gets to the point where it is brought forth to the people of Butte, we will have people, you know, we won't have an opportunity at that point for having everyone included in that decision and being satisfied with what we're going to have as a community going forward. This is going to last with us for the rest of time with Butte. You know, I'm getting a little older, I don't know how much, many more years I'll have here, but our kids and everything else are going to be affected by what happens with this decision. And, you know, the confidential part of it is going ahead, but we are trying with the public workshops, trying to get people involved in this thing right up front, ahead of time. And Matt's going to hear that, John's going to hear that, we're going to have the community bring their ideas to the forefront here so that it doesn't get precluded from being included in that final consent decree. But we believe that things should be more open. We believe that this town needs to take this thing fully and completely under its control because we're going to live with this. We have a perception around the rest of the state about what Butte consists of and it's time we change that. It's time we moved it ahead and said, we're taking this over and we're going to make this a model community that is, that is enticing to everyone to come here and live. You know, I, you guys have the final say too on what's signed by the consent decree. I read a story the other day and I didn't realize how much power you had in the late 1800s, the whole uptown Butte burned down. And, and the council passed a law that every, that's never going to happen again. Everything's going to be built of brick so that it lasts forever. And look at it, it's still standing. And that's the decision you guys will have here and this community needs to be a part of that decision-making so that this town stands forever and becomes what it is. It's the best place ever and we need to keep it that way. Thank you for your time and we will have that workshop and we hope to see you guys there.
Commissioner Sorch, before you leave, Nordee.
All I want to say, thank you, Madam Chair. All I want to say is, Nordee, thank you for being involved. Thank you for, you know, keeping us, keeping us informed. You know, I also want to say, I really appreciate Joe Griffin. Joe, he would eat and breathe and super fund issues over the years and his willingness, his willingness to stay involved after retirement, it would have been really easy when one person retires, just to walk away from everything, you know, so I really appreciate his, his involvement to share his technical expertise.
And I want to say also, thank you for keeping this on the front burner. I see a lot of familiar faces out there and just keep on keeping on.
Yeah, I'll tell you, you know, these are the ones that are doing it, not me. They're the ones, if I don't do the right thing, they kick my butt all the time, so thank you.
And Bill, we expect to see the video, maybe we can get that?
Yes, we'll make sure to get the video. I'll tell you, when you look at that video and you, and you see the flyover, because it's a flyover of that, you see a trench is what you see and, and the voice over tells you the story behind it. It's something that's compelling.
Thank you very much. Commissioner Walker and then Commissioner Ralph.
Madam Chair, this is for, questions for Joe. Joe, in the past few years, I've seen them line and they're building these large sump pumps around town. They're, I-
Oh, are those the hydrodynamic devices?
Yeah, that's what they're called. Now, how are those working to reduce the stormwater sediments?
Joe?
They work for reducing sediments, they're almost absolutely ineffective at reducing metals. The metals reside either in the dissolved form or attached to the finer particles and those don't remove fine particles, they remove down to fine-sized sand, but not the silt-sized fraction. So the last I looked at the data that had been collected, you know, you collect concentration going in and concentration coming out and it's kind of hard to do on these things, but sometimes it was better coming out and sometimes it was worse and it kind of evened out to be about a zero, honestly. So they were kind of expensive and really, they were, they take a lot of maintenance too. But, you know, if we get, if the county gets the money to do the maintenance, I guess that's, that's fine. They do take sediment out so that if we have retention basins downstream from them, they will keep the sediment basins from filling up so fast that any kind of basin like that will obviously have to be cleaned out every so often. But the ones in Missoula Gulch, there's two basins now, they were put in in, I think, 95 or 96, they've never been cleaned out. Zero maintenance on them. They're pretty, they're very efficient and very low maintenance. And you can make them look very pretty. You can make them look like a, like a little lake, like a little pond, so.
Follow-up, Commissioner?
No, I think he addressed that. Thank you, Joe, and keep up the good work.
Thank you.
Commissioner Ralph?
Thank you. I, I think I can save Nordee a little bit of trouble here. I believe the Silver Bow Creek flyover video is on their website. I think that's what I'm looking at right now.
Make you come back up to the front here, Nordee.
We have a video on there, but we've got one with voice on it and the one on the website does not. So we've got Ron Davis speaking on this video, explaining a little bit more in detail what you're seeing.
Okay, thanks again and we look forward to hearing from you soon.
Thank you.
Thanks, Nordee. Okay, at this point in the meeting, I am opening up a public comment period on any items that are on tonight's agenda. If anyone would care to speak on any items that are on tonight's agenda, please come to the podium and identify yourself for the record.
Talking to me?
Yes, go ahead.
Thank you for the opportunity. I've got a couple of things to talk about.
Sir, would you mind, would you mind just identifying yourself for the record?
Oh, excuse me.
And then you'll go right to the microphone.
My name is Carl Hafer.
Okay.
I live here in Butte. I've been coming to these meetings for many years. I've worked on the Superfund for 10, 12 years myself and I've probably upset some people, but some of them have upset me. First off, I have in my hand here this Superfund decree talks worry group council to hear presentation, referring to what we're doing here, right here tonight. I notice in here that Mr. Joe Griffiths, yes, has made mention of some things that he feels needs, needs to be completed or readdressed, et cetera, et cetera, needs to be done over on Continental Drive, et cetera. I have, I have spoke about this before and I have talked to Nikki Green numerous times and there was a guy in the paper the other day who's a new man and he had a phone number and I called him and talked to him. He said he would probably maybe get back to me and kind of give me some of his insight and it sounded like he's quite knowledgeable and smart person. What I'm, what I'm going to address, you know, I think many years ago, I think of one of the meetings, I don't know if it was in the Thornton Building or wherever it was, I asked Joe Griffiths what they were going to do about Grove Creek. I believe, if I'm not mistaken, he can correct me if he wants to, that he said there's no contamination up there, we're not going to do anything. Well, recently, down at the bottom of Montana Street, where the highway department put in that new little deal there to take care of, you know, that problem that they had down on the end of South Montana Street where it turns right and goes up to Grove Creek, little basin creek. They, the highway department, when they put in that covert and did all that work, they took samples. Now, they didn't take samples of everything and Mr. Green, who's been very accommodating to me, matter of fact, after I called this other new gentleman that's in the paper, I called Nikki Green and Nikia Green and left my name and he called me back and I told him I had spoken with this gentleman and just wanted to let him know I had spoken with him and I sounded like I was impressed with him. But anyway, I see Mr. Griffith wants to do some things on Continental Drive. I think you have a, a real significant problem that is going to haunt you with Grove Creek. You know, it comes out a little basin creek and it all goes into Silver Bow Creek. It goes through, now they've put up a sign, they have that Grove Creek Trailer Court, you know, in that deep dip down, you know, when you go up the Triple S and down that street. And children are play there. I think if, if someone doesn't maybe make a little health study of the people who live right down there in that Grove Creek Trailer Court, their children play in that stream, I think if you don't address some of the things on Grove Creek, I think it'll haunt you. I think it'll be the same deal that you turn down putting the, you know, the part of the, you know, the things you're going to move and you decide to use Gilman's ground, the same things that the pole plant would have haunted you with will be haunting you with Grove Creek. And I, I think you should, I think you should keep that in mind. I think Grove Creek has a possibility, and I'm quite certain it does, I'm very familiar with Grove Creek. Matter of fact, I have a couple of pieces of property adjacent to it and I think it's definitely contaminated, we know it's contaminated. The highway department tested it, all of the things that, there's four main things that they tested for, that some of it's very, very high and some of it's not. But I think you should keep that in mind. I, I think that if you're going to do something on Continental Drive where there's, sure, there's a little water out there, but Grove Creek, now you talk about a storm, when it comes down through there, you know, and it comes down past the Copper Mountain and then goes right through there, I think you could have a real problem. I think you should think about. Any questions?
This is just a public comment period, Carl, so we can't really have a dialogue, okay? Thank you very much. Any other comment on any item on tonight's agenda?
Carl Edgar Vanroth, 2601 Grand Avenue. I've got a couple of comments. First relative to the liability falling up on Mr. Henderson there. That green, that red line runs right down through the middle of Texas. They took all the contamination out of the north side of Farrell Street. We've got those wells or whatever they call them on the west side of Texas. But Silver Bow Creek runs alongside of Texas and I kind of feel that some of the drainage area runs over on the east side. And you know what area that is? That's the green. And I don't know if you have done any testing or not, when we had our house abated a couple of years ago, it was built in 1917, we were only 400% over the standard. So there's some contamination on the other side of the line. So we're talking about liability down the line, maybe we ought to be a little concerned about what's on the outside of the district. Second comment on the Judiciary Committee, Section 3, Resolution 16-3, the bond issue. I only ask, is there a smarter way? Is there a smarter way, a holistic climatically and cost-appropriate way to use the limited recreational capital of our community?
Thank you, Ed. Any further comment on any item on tonight's agenda? Okay. Seeing none, we'll move on to Section 2. This is communication number 15-490. Karen Burns, Director, Butte Silver Bow Community Development Department, requesting council's recommendation to approve Council Communication 15-460, request from Blaine Brown to purchase city-county property under the adjacent landowner policy. I did attend the land sales committee meeting today, so I have quite a few of these I can get some information on, in particular- In particular, there is a resolution that has been on, is on our council secretary's desk to be introduced on the 16th of March, so we will be able to cross-reference these two together at that time. We'll continue to hold it in advance. Section 3 is Communication Number 16-27, Craig T. Williams of 803 North Main, Butte, Montana, requesting council's authorization to purchase county-owned property under the adjacent landowner policy. And we are holding this, uh, still looking into a survey of that, that land. There's quite a bit of mine land up there, so it's being worked on. We will hold that in advance as well. Section 4, Communication Number 16-52, Ywen Tan and Y Gong Tan, 1627 Shore Drive, San Jose, California, requesting council commissioners to approve purchase of property at 417 North Main Street, Butte, Montana. Doris Grokert is going to be sending a letter that, these are actually nephews of Danny Wong here in town and we're just going to give them an opportunity to donate the property to us and we'll see what that brings. The letter is being sent as we speak. So we'll hold that in advance until such time that we get a review back from land sales. Section 5, Communication Number 16-63, Danette L. Gleason, Director Butte Silver Bow Finance and Budget Department, requesting the council commissioners authorize a presentation on March 2nd, 2016 on the audit conducted on the fiscal year 2015 comprehensive annual financial report, the CAFR, and the federal schedule of awards. Commissioner Morgan.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Being that we held that, um, presentation last week, I'll make a motion that we place Communication Number 16-63 on file.
Second.
We have a motion and a second to place Communication 16-63 on file. Is there anything on the question? All in favor? Aye. Opposed? Motion carries. Section 6, Communication Number 16-65, Julie Connors, Accountant, Butte Silver Bow Finance and Budget Department, requesting council commissioners schedule a public hearing for March 2nd, 2016 for the purpose of amending the fiscal year 2015-16 budget to allow for increased expenditures of unanticipated revenue. Commissioner Morgan.
Thank you, Madam Chair. We held that public hearing, so I'll make a motion that we place Communication 16-65 on file.
Second.
We have a motion and a second to place Communication Number 16-65 on file. Anything on the question? All in favor? Aye. Opposed? Motion carries. Section 7, Communication 16-66, James M. Manning, Chairman, Greenway Service District, requesting council commissioners schedule a bid opening for the Silver Bow Creek Trailhead construction on March 2nd, 2016. Commissioner Morgan.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I'll make a motion that we place Communication 16-66 on file.
Second.
We have a motion and a second to place Communication 16-66 on file. Is there anything on the question? All in favor? Aye. Opposed? Motion carries. Section 8, Communication 16-68, Lori Casey, Assistant Planning Director, Butte Silver Bow Planning Department, requesting council of commissioners authority to hold two bid openings on March 2nd, 2016 regarding the community transportation enhancement program, CTEP. Commissioner Morgan.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I'll make a motion and place 16, your Communication Number 16-68 on file.
Second.
We have a motion and a second to place Communication 16-68 on file. Is there anything on the question? All those in favor? Aye. Opposed? Motion carries. Section 9, Communication Number 16-69, Patsy Coats, Property Specialist, Butte Silver Bow Land Records Office, requesting council of commissioners concur with the request to hold a bid opening on March 16th, 2016 regarding the title and lien search of the 2016 tax deed process. We will hold that in advance until that bid opening on March 16th. Section 10, Communication 16-70, Patsy Coats, Property Specialist, Butte Silver Bow Land Records Office, requesting council of commissioners to concur with the request of the county attorney's office to issue a resolution for mailing, quote, "a notice that a tax deed may be issued to the county," end quote, "to all property owners and interested parties on the delinquent real property taxes for year 2012." I believe that resolution is in the county attorney's office being drafted and we will hold that in advance. Section 11, Communication Number 16-79, Lori Casey, Assistant Planning Director, Butte Silver Bow Planning Department, requesting council of commissioners authorize a bid opening on March 16th, 2016 regarding landscaping projects using CTEP funds. And we will hold that in advance until the bid opening on March 16th. Section 12, Communication 16-80, Jenny Chambers, Remediation Division Administrator at the Montana Department of Environmental Equality, requesting council of commissioners authorize time on the March 16th, 2016 agenda for an update presentation on the Montana Pole and Treatment Plant Site. We'll hold that in advance until March 16th. Section 13, Communication Number 16-81, Brian Wilkins, Butte Silver Bow Public Works Department, requesting council of commissioners concur with the request to hold a bid opening on April 6th, 2016 regarding the Basin Creek Water Treatment Plant ancillary facilities, South Side Pump Station and the PRV Building. We'll hold that in advance for that bid opening on, uh, April 6th. Section 15, Communication 16-83, Martha R. Serini, 705 Kenwood Avenue, Butte, Montana, requesting council of commissioners authorize the purchase of property under the adjacent landowner policy next to her rental at 327 North Wyoming Street. That is still sitting in the land sales department to make their referral back to us, so we'll continue to hold that in advance. Section 16, Communication Number 16-84, Ted Ackerman, owner of the Miners Hotel, 53 West Park, Butte, Montana, requesting council of commissioners authorize placement of a new projecting sign for the Miners Hotel at 53 West Park, Butte, Montana. That has been referred to planning for the review and to come back to this body. Oh, well, Mr. Sesso, would you care to comment on that one?
Madam Chair, uh, we did review it, uh, before the letter was sent to you. So, um, you know, the issue is making sure that the integrity of the fasteners for the projecting sign are up to snuff so that the sign is safe, patrols over the sidewalk, but it requires, uh, the governing body to issue an encroachment permit. So by virtue of your, uh, concurring and placing the letter on file, you, you would be authorizing the encroachment permit and the project can move forward. So that would be our recommendation.
Right. Commissioner Foley?
Madam Chair, I'll make a motion to concur and place Communication 16-84 on file.
Okay, very good. We have a motion and a second to concur with Communication 16-84 and place this item on file, which allows the planning department to go forward with their encroachment, uh, process. Is there anything further on the question? Commissioner Walker?
We just had a question here. I don't know, Commissioner Henderson, can you remember this coming to Public Works?
No.
Don't we normally have that go through Public Works when we're doing encroachment?
Um, Commissioner Morgan?
Thank you, Madam Chair. Commissioner Walker, that, that's true. They usually do go to Public Works for their approval for this.
What is the pleasure of the council? Commissioner Fisher?
Thank you, Madam Chair. I see no need for this to go to Public Works. It seems like John, uh, and his department have done their due diligence and I think we as a committee here should, uh, go ahead and proceed and let it go move on. Thank you.
Anything further on the question? All those, Commissioner, Commissioner Palmer, excuse me.
Thank you, Madam Chair. The only reason that, you know, the, when a person requests a sign hanging over a sidewalk or on the side of the building or anything, it goes to the planning, uh, department and they okay it. And then typically we refer it to Public Works just so they can check it out and make sure that it's going to be structurally sound and everything else. So that's the only reason it goes to Public Works, but it does, it starts off in the planning department and then it moves on to Public Works to be checked out and then we issue the, uh, encroachment permit. We okay it.
Commissioner Henderson?
Madam Chair, there, um, we have had this, some signs come before us like Kiowa and that, when he presented them and that, but I think what Mr. Walker was concerned about is, I don't have anything on the Public Works. We're all clean slate now and he, he wants to put something on there. Thank you.
Commissioner Walker?
You know, I would just mention that for a matter of procedure. I don't have a problem with the planning department okaying and having us prove it tonight.
Anything further on the question? All those in favor? Aye. Opposed? Motion carries. Thank you, gentlemen. All right, uh, this, we're on Section 17. Section 17 is Communication Number 16-85, Jeffrey L. Miller, Director Butte Silver Bow Fire Services, requesting council of commissioners schedule a public hearing for March 16th, 2016 for the purpose of receiving public comment on a proposed amendment to the Butte Silver Bow Fire Department's fiscal year 2015-16 budget. We will hold that in advance until the public hearing on March 16th. Section 18, Communication Number 16-89, Lori Casey, Assistant Planning Director, Butte Silver Bow Planning Department, requesting council of commissioners adopt Resolution Number 16-11, approving the growth policy, amending number 30, amendment number 30, excuse me. And, uh, we do have a resolution in our Judiciary Committee that is awaiting approval and at that time we'll cross-reference the two. So continue to hold that in advance. Section 19, Communication Number 16-91, Northee Trethaway, Restore Creek Coalition, requesting council of commissioners authorize a presentation on March 9th, 2016 from Restore Creek Coalition regarding the Upper Silver Bow Creek and the coalition. Commissioner Morgan?
Thank you, Madam Chair. I'll make a motion that we place Communication 16-91 on file.
Second.
We have a motion and a second to, uh, place Communication 16-91 on file. Is there anything on the question? All those in favor? Aye. Opposed? Motion carries. Section 20, Communication Number 16-94, Lori Casey, Assistant Planning Director, Butte Silver Bow Planning Department, requesting council of commissioners conduct a public hearing on March 23rd, 2016 to hear public comment on proposed amendments to the official Butte Silver Bow zoning map. We will hold that in advance until March 23rd. So finally, on our agenda is the opportunity for any public comment on any public matter that was not on tonight's agenda. Seeing none? Anything else to come before us this evening? Commissioner Morgan?
Thank you, Madam Chair. Can you remind me what day we don't have council this month?
The last Wednesday, which would be 30.
The last?
Yes, the last.
Thank you.
That. Anything else? Commissioner Walker?
Judiciary will re-
Oh, yes, I'm sorry. Judiciary will be reconvening. Uh, we will, uh, I would entertain a motion to adjourn this meeting, though.
I make a motion here.
Second.
We have a motion and, oh, on the question, Commissioner McDonough?
No, I'm not going to delay this any longer, but Bill McGregor sent an email on his way out the door that said he left a copy of the video presentation and if the council secretary wants to keep it, sorry, Tracy, and, um, keep it and put it on our website. It's still in the projector, so.
It's still there, Brandon?
He left it in the computer.
Oh, okay.
He just sent an email.
Okay. Anything further, question? All those in favor? Aye. Opposed?